Okay, it is four o'clock and this meeting is called to adjourn. Roll call, all of our trustees are here. Oh, actually, Trista Robinson just texted and said that she's at the Hayden branch. So all of our trustees, except for Trista Robinson, are here and she will be here later. And our treasurer might be able to participate electronically later and also our attorney. All right, so first up, we have our insurance presentation and discussion by our new broker, Brian Baumann.
Madam Chair, trustees, thank you for the opportunity to meet with you today. I did have an opportunity to listen to a portion of the last meeting. And so I think I have a general idea of what we're looking for, but at any time, I welcome any questions. So as of now, well, just briefly, my name is Brian Baumann. I am with the Hartwell Corporation. We do insurance for businesses around the state of Idaho and we have a municipality division that works with over 100 municipalities in the state. We do represent ICrimp. We also represent a number of other insurance carriers. So that's kind of an overview about me. I can, I can kick into talking about what we're seeing right now, unless I should address something, something else that you'd like me to discuss first.
Right.
So the insurance marketplace for public entities is very difficult right now. What we're seeing across the state of Idaho is roughly a 20 or 30% increase, even if the, the organizations have no claims. So if Community Library Network was paying $45,000 last year, even under best of circumstances, we'd see a new premium of $55,000 to $60,000. So there's some good news and some bad news. The bad news is insurance costs are way up. There were a few big water losses. The good news is we do have a proposal right now for ICrimp. And it also appears that we have an employment practices proposal that covers employment claims that's also exists. We do not, we're not the agent on that as of now, but those policies are in place currently from everything we can tell. So there is coverage ready to be bound. If I were in your shoes, I would want clarity on what's covered. And I would want to see if there was something better from a pricing perspective. Does that sound about right in what you're looking for today?
That's my impression.
Okay. Is there anything specific that you'd like to know about regarding the policies before I dive in?
Trista Boss?
Yeah, I appreciate all this. I assume you've had a chance to look at the ICrimp quote. I don't think we have, but I know the premium price that was quoted. But I'm very interested in finding out if anything has changed from what they offered last year. Because they dropped some coverage on us a year ago. I'm wondering if they dropped anything else? Or if it's just a repeat of what we had for the last fiscal year?
Good question. From what I have seen from correspondence that ICrimp had sent, the coverages have remained the same from the year prior when they were reduced. My hope is, and I can't confirm this one way or the other, but my hope is, as it does look like there's some stability, there's increased stability, that we could see all the coverages brought back to their normal limits and the employment practices added back to ICrimp in the future. I do understand there is frustration with ICrimp's premium. It did go up dramatically. Looking some numbers, and I haven't seen the finalized numbers. From what I understand, there were two major water losses that happened within the last year. And with those water losses, if we used, let's pretend we use last year's premium of $45,000. If we were to extrapolate that $45,000 over the years to try to make up for the 1.5 million in water losses, it would take us 37 years to break even. So that's, it's no one's fault that the water losses happened, from what I understand. However, we're just in a difficult spot right now. So I'm happy we do have a renewal for ICrimp. I believe one of the trustees made a comment that there was an expectation of being non-renewed, if I remember the video correctly from last week. And that, I actually met with a, I met with a special district today who was non-renewed after a large claim. And so I'm not sure what special powers you have, but you did receive a quote. And I do believe that will save you money compared to what the marketplace would offer you. That being said, it's our goal to provide a marketing log to you in the near future that would break down all the potential options by reaching out to various insurance companies with the information we have and asking them what they could do and if there could be any premium savings for you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, interim director.
I noticed on our renewals from ICrimp that the line item under floods that was marked pipes and fixtures have been crossed through. And I wondered if that means that we aren't covered because of that this year moving forward? Or do you have any additional information on that one line?
Was that in the red line changes that they made when they send out? So they wouldn't have done that specifically as a punitive measure to come back after you. But what I would like to do is get clarification on why that happened and to find out what specifically that would mean. I don't have that in front of me, but I will get back to you on what that specifically means. So you said pipes, lines, plugs. Is that correct?
It's under flood coverage part two and its pipes and fixtures have been apparently eliminated.
Okay. Pipes and fixtures.
Trista Boss?
Is it realistic to think that you might be able to get alternate quotes from commercial companies or any of our alternates anyway? In time for us to make a decision by, say, mid-September or at least later September? Because I think this would come, we have to engage at the end of September for October 1st.
You're asking the right questions and your timeframe is spot on. I do not, it is my belief that we would not find anything better in the open marketplace. That because you currently have all of your property insured. You have coverage for your board of directors. You have abuse coverage and a variety of other coverages. I believe we could maybe get something cheaper if we didn't have a bunch of those coverages in force. But if I were on your board, it would be hard for me to want that to be the situation. I would want to keep the robust coverages that are in force right now through ICrimp. That being said, we have, what, 25 days to give back to you? So I do want to look around and find out. But as of now, my instincts say you probably have the best you have, you will get right now.
Boss?
A follow-up on that is last year, our, one of our coverages was reduced and we never, we were unable to get other coverage to return it to at the levels it was. You may have looked into that, seen that, but is it possible to get a supplemental or secondary policy that would go with ICrimp that would restore those coverages that were dropped? That, so it would, it would basically, ICrimp would be primary and then the alternate would be secondary. Once ICrimp is a, if we had a case like a...
So I believe what you're asking is, since ICrimp has reduced the coverages, and I believe the main coverage that was reduced across the board was you have a $500,000 primary limit. And normally with ICrimp, you have $3 million, but they dropped that down to 500,000. Okay? I see some heads nodding. So in theory, we can go look for those. We would have to break them out by line. Would ask is which line item is most important to you? You do have a $2 million liability aggregate that is available to you. So in theory, you could have several $500,000 losses. But the $3 million that's typically provided if a case is brought outside of the state of Idaho in federal court, that is the limit that's been reduced. Was there any specific coverage that the board would feel you would like to see those coverages increased back for? Back up to?
Trista Boss?
I don't know the details of it, but we, we had that $3 million limit. I thought it was just kind of in one area, but you know, for the example that you gave outside of Idaho, I think you're probably saying because of the tort limits in Idaho. But can there be a specific policy that would just cover above 500,000 up to 3 million? In a case like what you mentioned?
So yes, there are policies that will cover you. What you're referring to would be called an excess policy. And yes, that does exist. However, the markets that we would have to pursue would break that coverage up. For instance, they would say, if you want the excess coverage for abuse, that will be its own policy. If you want it for general liability, that would be its own policy. If you want it for auto liability, that would be its own policy.
Interim Director?
Just as a quick reminder, we did receive the estimate for ICrimp and it was just shy of $90,000. And then the actual renewal came back at just shy of $99,000. So I just want the board to be aware of that, that we would already be, you know, at a really high insurance and I don't know how we'd be able to afford additional coverages. And then one thing I would ask that you look into, Brian, is in the exclusions of the policy, there is a section regarding library materials. And there is a section added at the end that says this exclusion to library materials does not apply in claims where members have complied with all provisions of Idaho Code 181517B. And so I would like just insight on what that actually means and how we are covered in the case of hardholds to minor books, because this is a very important issue for us as a library.
Okay. Well, there's no doubt that legislation in Idaho has been a hot button issue in every library across the state. I actually was speaking to ICrimp recently and mentioned the, some of the legislation. And a comment was made that their desire is to work alongside the state of Idaho. They, they don't have a desire to get in the middle of any disagreements going on politically. And so that has been a situation that's been changing. That being said, I would like to look into the specifics for you. And if any other specific questions come up in the meantime, any other examples, I would love to ask them those specific questions as well, just so you have every available resource at your fingertips. And we've already thought through some specific claims together.
Trista Boss?
I wasn't paying enough attention, but interim director, did you say that it was an exclusion? They wouldn't cover anything if we complied with or without a worded?
It says exactly, so this is under the exclusions of the policy. And then within that paragraph, it says, this exclusion does not apply in claims where members have complied with all provisions within Idaho Code 181517B.
So it's a double negative. It's an exclusion, but it doesn't apply if, so, so we've complied with it with our policy? Unless they would say we haven't.
I agree.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Trista Boss?
Back on the previous question, Brian, on increasing to 3 million, I think for myself, I would like to find out what it would cost just for maybe a general liability. I don't know what that means, general, but I guess it doesn't cover autos and it doesn't cover, I don't know what else, but it sounds to me like that would be the most applicable. If we could get that for, you know, 10,000 or something, I guess we'd have to try to shoehorn it in, but that would make it slow again. We are still, I feel like I have an open wound there because ICrimp did that to us.
Trista Allen?
If we were given those, maybe in strats, a million dollars, $2 million, $3 million instead of restoring 100% the company?
Was the, was the question directed at me?
Yes.
I had a hard time hearing the question.
Yes, Trista Boss asked if we could get a quote for what would it cost? I guess on a supplemental policy to get us back up to where we were prior to fiscal '24. That was a $3 million difference. Instead of just giving us a price for 3 million, if we could have that stratified, you know, a million, in case there's a giant difference in the premium cost, a million, $2 million, $3 million?
Yes, yes, we can do that.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
So there are two insurance policies that I see in place currently. And if there are others or if I'm missing anything, let me know. I'm new enough that I'm, I'm willing to learn. So we have the ICrimp policy, which was the catch-all that did everything. It looks like two years ago, ICrimp had non-renewed the employment practices portion, which is now covered through a separate policy with Great American. That policy is roughly $7,500 a year. That, that's what I've seen. So we have roughly 99,000, I'm rounding up for ICrimp and another 7,000-ish. Let's say it's up to 107,000 total between those two policies.
And that's correct. Those are the only two that we have. There aren't other policies.
Okay, thank you.
Trista Boss?
Except correction, that was one year ago that they dropped the employment coverage. So we've only had that extra policy one year.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I'm not sure where you saw two years.
I incorrectly assumed that when the ICrimp policies' coverages were reduced, that policy showed up. So hey, I told you I was willing to learn.
Do we have more questions or is there more that you would like to present?
Do we have more to present?
Brian, we'd like to hear from you if you have more?
I, I'm not, has, has the board, thank you, Madam Chair, has the board talked about what ICrimp offers in the past? Has there been any presentation by ICrimp? I'm trying to wrap my arms around maybe what's been discussed from an insurance perspective.
I don't think that there's been an ICrimp presentation on our actual insurance coverages since I've been on the board the last three years.
Okay.
Good question.
I can give like anecdotal information. So I think insurance was just insurance a few years ago. Like it was just something the director took care of. It wasn't really an issue. And it is becoming a bigger issue every year now that our costs are doubling. So I think a presentation would be really helpful. The more information we have to make the smartest decision, the better. And this is all new territory for the organization to have such involvement in this process.
Okay. I, I would love to come and shake your hands in person and do a little more of a deep dive if possible. So very briefly though, in, over the last 50 years, what has happened across the United States is that insurance carriers like Travelers, Liberty, whoever it might be, realized they were having a hard time insuring public entities. Public entities are unique. I mean, how many businesses have open mic for constituents to come talk, right? I mean, there's a lot, a lot that goes into it. And so in Idaho, for instance, 50 years ago, no insurance company anywhere wanted to write municipalities. So ICrimp was created by a series of agents. One of those guys was a man who I worked with for a number of years until he retired. Here's why I share all this. When ICrimp came together, they give you, let's pretend, like 15 different coverages at one time. In order for us to get away from ICrimp, we have to go shop off and find all 15 of those coverages to replace. So it's not typically a slam dunk. There's paperwork. There's different things that go into it. We're more than happy to help with that. I just want to have the right expectations in place as we do look around. And then if we can meet in person in the future, I'm more than happy to talk through every type of, of coverage that you currently have. Insurance agents can bore board members to tears very quickly. And I don't want that to be the case today. But I would like to come do a more thorough discussion if that's something you're willing to do in the future.
Question.
I've seen nods all around.
Okay.
Are questions permitted from the board?
No, I'm sorry, this is just for the board. Trista Boss?
So Brian, kind of a follow-up on the pipe breakage flooding. Do you detect this is why the premium went up? Because we're a risk for that? And if so, can we put some steps in place and show ICrimp that we are making sure this will never happen again? One thing, you know, I've thought about is, or I'm asked for here is a checklist, kind of an emergency checklist. When, you know, high winds happen, we do such and such. When temperatures drop below zero, we list the ceiling tiles, every tenth ceiling tile so the air, room air can get up to the to the springer pipes. If we have some kind of checklist, would that maybe lower the premium? Or is that even why they raised the premium?
I believe that having this large of a loss is why your premium went up by 100%. The, the questions you're asking to say, how do we get back in the good graces of an insurance company by doing the right things? Is the right question. I, it won't save us money on this renewal. But what it will do is show a commitment to having lower claims in the future. So for instance, I'd like to ask ICrimp their opinion because they have a number of, of members that are in cold weather areas. So they have, and I don't know how effective they are. This is why I'm saying I want to look into it. They have systems that can detect when your pipes are freezing. I'd like to reach out and say, ICrimp, Community Library Network wants to take the right steps to mitigate these kind of losses in the future. How can we do this together? What can we do? So I will talk to them. I like to talk to their claims people and some of their underwriters and say, with everything on the table, what can we do to help the insurance prices go down by showing good faith long-term?
Interim Director?
I would just like to state that we are already taking some of those measures. It's just every library operation is not shared with the library board. And again, it's the director, the interim director who deals with the library operations aspect. And so that's where those kinds of things would need to stay.
Yep.
Trista Allen?
Is there a guesstimate or any kind of idea how long we would be penalized in terms of our premium because of our claim this past year? Is it a, what a fair premium for a year, five years? Again, assuming there are no additional claims.
Good question. It's probably longer than a year. I don't think it's necessarily five years. I, I don't know. We don't know. I mean, heck with inflation going the way it is, maybe we'll really hope we're only paying 100 grand in five years, right? Who knows? But that being said, I don't know. What I, what I would like to do is ask some of my contacts at ICrimp and say, you know, when you've seen members in the past have 100% increase in premium, what has the next five years looked like historically? What can we expect? And that can be part of my questions that I can give, answers that I can give back to you.
Thank you. So Brian, have you or your firm started working with any other alternates such as, I mean, we did have a quote and then they backed off, a commercial company or several of them backed off when this water damage was underway or an open claim? Is, is it something that you, maybe you can resume what we had? And or are you, are you aware of some other quoting that was going on? And whether more can be done than that?
I am aware of the quoting that was going on and we can more or less pick up where that left off. With all of your libraries being located in arguably Idaho's most beautiful forest, you're already behind the eight ball as far as property companies wanting to insure you. They're very scared of highly, you know, forested areas right now. So I think that combined with the water loss is putting us in a difficult spot. That being said, what we would do is one, we would create a formal, a formal application that's sent out. At the same time, we're also hitting the phone saying, here's the general scenario. Price doubled due to this loss. Here's the name of the insured. Are you, is it in your appetite to look at a risk like that? That's our terminology within the industry. Some of them might, some of our insurance companies might say, hey, anybody with 100% loss ratio, meaning they've had claims exceeding their premium, we're not going to look at currently. So typically what we'd see is this, next year or the year prior is when that big loss has less impact because it's seen, those two losses are seen as what's called a shock loss, which means it was just an accident. And it's not something that happens every three years. It's something that might happen every 30 years. Can you quoting? But what I will, pardon if I may, what I, what I would like to get you is a full marketing log. And we would have responses from, say, 30 insurance companies. And it would list all their names and it would list why they could or could not provide a proposal.
Trista Boss?
Well, I pretty like hearing that. So I'm looking forward to something like that. So thank you if you can do that.
Trista Allen?
But isn't for this year, is it? For the upcoming year, is it? Because I'm assuming our claim isn't closed yet, so. Because I'm assuming our claim is enclosed yet, so I don't even know if we can stop around.
Good question. Um, we are fighting an incredible uphill battle with an open claim, there's no doubt about it. Um, what I would do is at least make the calls and say, is this something you want to look at this year? If not, can we circle back around in twelve months? Uh, and from there, it gives us a head start on the future. Who knows, we might pull a rabbit out of a hat.
Great, uh, trust the box.
So, so I guess I'm a little confused. I thought I C R I P paid us all these funds for the things and thought we were basically closed. But it's not, is it, is there still more payments they have to make?
There's still work being done and there could be more payments to be made. So it's not anywhere near closed until we're actually done with the projects. I think what I want to keep in mind is that Brian stated earlier that. He believes we would not find anything better in the marketplace than our current policy with I C R I P. And I think, um. It would be. Probably the wisest thing for us to renew with I C R I P and renew with the Great American. And then this take is coming here to really invest. And I mean, alternative insurance options. I don't think it can be done in the six weeks that we have left in this fiscal year.
Yeah, I've been probably not, um, like you said, you never know, and you might pull a rabbit out of a hat. So I'd like to give them that opportunity. Trust the boss.
Yeah, absolutely, I'd like to go, I, I don't want to just stop with what we have, I'd like to go. Uh, do the requests, if you can do that and find out if there is something out there. Cause we did have something going. Anyway.
Doesn't look like we have any more questions right this second, do you have more things for us to consider?
Not at this time.
Okay, so you'll, uh, get back with the interim director if a rabbit appears somewhere.
We're hopeful. All right, thank you guys, have a good one.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. All right. Well, the next thing on the agenda is, uh, the executive session, but I think that we need to wait until four forty-five. Um, for our attorney and treasurer to log on. Yeah, she, she text again and said that, uh, I ninety is out of self. Or at least, or she that. Um, so. Should we start the budget discussion, do you think, and then come back to the executive session? Okay, yeah, I just hate to waste any time, we need to work on the budget. Okay, so, uh, we are then, now we're in objection, tabling the executive session, that's. I think it's tabling, you put it down so you can take it back up. Second meeting. So we will start with the discussion of this year twenty-five budget. Interim Director, do you want to explain what you've done?
Um, yes. Um, in your packet on green paper, you have the July financial statements. And balance sheet and this is a draft as it needs to be reviewed to ensure it is an ever so accurate. Um, but this is, has been made available to you. Um, you also have the C I N income statement for July and that should be. Correct and does not need to be recreated. Um, in our last meeting, trustee Plast asked for the carry forward balance. And I unfortunately have to just say that we do not have that information. Um. I, I don't, and it's. Not because I don't want to provide it, it's simply that I don't have the. Knowledge and the access to the resources to be that carry forward balance. Um. What will need to happen is. Myself and our administrative assistant will need to essentially learn the process from scratch. So we need time and we need to train and we need to learn on the job to do that. And I hope we can maybe have it in two weeks, but I do not have it now. And so I don't know how that impacts the budget discussion going forward. Um, because we don't have that, and so I don't know if there's. I don't know if the board is willing to move forward with the budget without having the carry forward.
Just you know.
Yeah, I'm sure you understand because. Page three of the draft. Budget does show, uh, an estimated available carry forward, so is that, is that, is that a? A good estimate, just we don't have the detailed breakdown of.
That's from June, um, third, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I did, I did highlight it even though I don't like, thank you.
Um, so a question on the Green Community Library Network statement. So the one that was created last week that they have contained an error or. Uh, trust the boss.
So I could. Almost calculate the estimated carry forward once we know the I C S. So you've got the I C S. Which includes the payment that came July twenty-fifth, I, I would hope. I think what we need is. An estimate of other payments we're going to get. In August and. September, and I went through last year and, uh. And also looked at the, uh. County website. Payments looks like a hundred thousand, a hundred and one thousand's coming in in July. And I could, anyway, it, we might. Be able to add two hundred and fifty thousand between property taxes coming in September. And, uh, the payments and so you add in that and then you subtract out the. The, uh, grants. I don't, I guess I don't remember what the. Why there's two. Uh, craft, uh, capital asset, there's, what's the C D A Rs? The C.
Card.
Card.
Capital asset repair based on then.
What's this, uh, dash, uh, C D A Rs, what was that one?
Where are you at?
I'm looking on the third page of the balance sheet. Cause that's, that's where we always got the I C S and then all we have to do is subtract off.
The C D, the Cedars account is, I believe the one that's treated like an investment account that you put money in. Not an investment account, but it earns a little bit more interest than a regular banking account, I think, but I'm not entirely.
Where are there two, uh, accounts, I guess?
One is for immediate access and one is to gain a little interest. Until those projects come to fruition.
I thought the immediate one was just the Harrison, which was like fifty-two thousand. That's, that's what was on the sheet at the end of, it was fifty-six thousand. So I didn't know where those numbers came that were so high.
An estimate of potential. Items that could hit, it's not that it's planned money is my understanding. We just don't have it, it's liquid money is how I understand that one account. And the other one is in these words, earning some interest.
But it must be there because the board set it aside. For carry forward or, uh, capital asset, I. I don't see where that, those numbers have been that high before, but. Anyway, I, I could. Estimate if I knew some of these. Different numbers, but, uh.
Interim Director.
I could also estimate that what I'm trying to explain is that it takes time to get these numbers. And I don't have them right now, I don't have access to them, I don't know how to get them off the top of my head. I need a few days to do that, so it's not a matter of just, well, give me. Accounts payable for the rest of the year, I don't have that, if I did, I would do this for you all. And I don't know that that's being understood.
Trust the Ellen.
Yeah, I guess I'm not critical, just. In difficulty moving a budget, not knowing what our. Emergency balance is basically our carry forward. That's, that needs to kind of hang where it's difficult to say, yes, I agree with the budget, but I don't know. Any one sort of event, um, funding we have sitting in the bank, basically.
So my question is on the income statement. Um, for the ten months ending in July. Um, on the back. And if you could just help me understand how you got to that number. Um, so we, you know, with the total project line, uh, so it was two eighty-one and eighty-two. So we have the total current revenue for the current month. That's one million, eight hundred nine thousand, eight sixty-two. And then the total current expenditures at forty-eight, five, four hundred eighty-five thousand, seven thirty-six. And then if I'm understanding, you are. Subtracting the expenditures from the revenue, is that correct? And if that's the case, um, I didn't come with the number of sixty-one thousand.
So I can tell you that our treasurer did this report, I did not create this report, I don't know how to answer that.
Okay, but can you, can you? See that subtracting four hundred eighty-five thousand from a million, eight hundred nine thousand, we don't come to a balance of sixty-one thousand?
I do understand that.
Okay.
I'm, how do I say this, I am not the business, sure, I don't have that skill set. I am a people and project manager, so. I, I can't answer these questions, like Janelle and I have completely different jobs. Not something I can just take over too.
Okay, so, uh, when our treasurer comes back, maybe we can randomly ask that question. So should we start dealing with the, uh, the suggestions? On trust the boss.
Um, you would, or, uh. Interim Director, are you able to confirm if the I C R I P? Claim funds is the same as what was on the sheet at the end of July? Or the end of June, I guess it was, six hundred fifty-four thousand of.
I would assume if it's on here that that is correct, but I.
I, I haven't seen it on here, I'm looking at the past.
Then I don't.
Have, have we paid? Or anything out of?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, I, I feel like you guys are not trusting me, but I.
No, no, I, I just, I thought we were buying materials and we were paying for, uh.
We haven't yet, we haven't been buying materials, we just got a chunk of money. Last month to buy materials, so that process kind of started. We also got money to almost pay for, um, supplies that were lost, but that money, um. So what I can tell you is on, let me see, line twenty. On line twenty-eight of your green sheets. Um, you can see that there is a hundred ninety-five thousand in parentheses, right? So that is the money that we received from I C R I P to start purchasing. Materials, that's why that line items changed. In line twenty-seven, um, children's programs, we also received nineteen thousand approximately to pay for. Items that were damaged. And then line forty-four for Apple, those are funds that we received earlier for I C R I P that have yet to be spent. And then line seventy-four in the storage, the offsite stores. That we have received money from I C R I P to pay for.
So it was last one, seventy-four.
And at the end of June, she had six hundred fifty-four thousand. I C R I P claim funds for Apple on those falls, it doesn't seem like those things are coming, we're close to six hundred fifty-four thousand. So there's other ones we've received for. Construction and, and furniture that isn't on here or something.
All the funds that we've received as of July thirty-first should be on here. If there are funds that we've received in August, it's not. We received, like I said, a chunk of money to pay for collections and a chunk to pay for children's.
Um, that's something like that, so treasurer may be able to look into, but I, I don't see where the. Where the business manager has six hundred fifty-four thousand on the. On the carry forward sheet, how that even comes close to. These items here.
And I don't think it's a matter of not trusting, it's a matter of understanding and, and we need to have that understanding.
I mean. Yeah, we need to hire a business manager, we should have hired one immediately and we didn't. And just because we're at right.
Trust the boss.
Well, I, I could. Make the estimate, but I just, I don't know. I, I subtract fifty-six thousand for, uh, carry for, for, uh, capital asset that she had for Harrison. She was extracting long-term stuff and. Uh. There's severance, I don't know how much of the left of that, the I C R I P fund doesn't look like it's anywhere near six hundred fifty-four thousand. Maybe two hundred or two hundred fifty thousand. And the grants and donation, I don't know why she had a hundred and seventy-two thousand, because it's always been. Items, line items fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, which should always add up to forty-five thousand that we subtract. I don't know what the seventy-two thousand was, but. If we do it the way we were normally doing it. It looks to me like we have. Sufficient. Funds left after the four months of cupboard, so. I just, I, if the treasurer can help explain some of that when she comes.
Okay, so interim director, do we have anyone asking to? To join with us, attorney or, or the treasurer yet? No, okay, would you let me know when they do, thanks. Okay, so it's. My understanding of, of, so just catch up to speed, uh, we ended the insurance presentation early and so we. Tabled the executive session until. We would be.
Oh, okay.
Um, okay, so for the budget. Uh. We, we just printed the, the number one board draft, just for reference, that it's not something that we really should be living at at this point.
We did number one because that's what we agreed to at our meeting when we thought I C R I P was. Ninety thousand dollars, so I just wanted that to be on record.
Uh, trust the Ellen.
Right, we've got one small error on that, I think, um, on line number fifty-one, that's scenario one. That's repairs and maintenance falls, it lists forty-five thousand dollars. And the memo says forty-two. I'm not using that, not going to worry about it, but there's, there's a discrepancy between the two, what the memo says and what the actual spreadsheet shows. But it's, if we're not using that, I'm not worried about it. Yeah.
Okay, trust the Ellen.
Okay, so it's reading through the memo I, I did in a massive meeting. And it looks as if we're going to take a lot of. Reductions on certain line items in order to make up for the extra I C R I P cost and for the, oh, great Americans included in there. So those two together, we were having to make up about, I think it was seventeen thousand dollar difference. and for the great Americans included in there. So those two together, we were having to make up about, I think it was seventeen thousand dollar difference. And then, so I guess I'm curious, um, I hope like we reduce communications by two thousand dollars. Yeah, and toriel by a certain amount, Harrison, but uh, any of those numbers expect to be too low? I mean, there, I mean, maybe there was a little wiggle room in it before. It said appear reducing, there are about five or six, something like that. Three, four, five, seven line items, oh, six, being reduced by a certain amount there. It took about seventeen thousand dollars. But it appear we can still pay the bills in those line items, but we're reducing the budget, so.
Um, line forty-three for janitorial, we are definitely cutting it very like close. Um, janitorial, you know, it won't allow us possibly to clean carpets twice a year. We might have to clean carpets one year professionally. So it's that kind of stuff that we're looking at. And the um, repair and maintenance line items, um, were discussed with facilities. And these are the areas that we thought we could get away with. But again, if something really major happens, we're going to have to find the money somewhere to take care of that. So these are within reason and operating very, very lean.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Just to be clear, the um, I see that uh, on, on the purple page of the number one and number two scenarios. Um, and you just pointed out janitorial. I see there's a difference um, on the, on this rect column. What, what else on here is um, different? Or is there something that I should know that I've not?
Yeah, let me just make sure there's no one in my email trying to get to the meeting. Um, so I wrote a budget discussion memo and so it's
It's in the back.
It, you know, and it goes line by line out where we would find uh, the extra money to pay for the actual cost of ICRAM and the great American at renewal. So on there, there's money taken from communications, from janitorial and from five or from four of their um, repair and maintenance for our smaller libraries and.
Okay, thank you.
See Allen?
Yeah, and I did go through on the memo and compare to the proposed fiscal twenty-five, one percent increase. They all, they are all reflected on there. The one that we're in the memo, one's actually in the, in the budget.
Interim Director?
You go ahead. Okay, um, so um, I also saw that added up, it comes to seventeen thousand. But actually, if we're going to meet with the insurance, increase it to a hundred and ten thousand in the second budget. So I see that on the first fall prepared and maintenance, we're actually taking away five thousand. Because originally it was forty-five thousand, brought down to forty-two, which we took away three thousand. And then now we're going down to forty, which is another two thousand. So altogether, we're taking away five thousand there. From forty-five and forty. Which brings, I'm sorry, which brings it then to twenty thousand, which would bring it to a hundred and ten.
Trust us?
So I know we have to balance it and get the numbers to add up. But I would like to build in a little bit of ever, I guess. Um, what I would like to propose, and I would just simply make a motion not, and not change the budget, but to have the um, staff pull out or the increase instead of three percent, be two and a half percent. And that would just be something the board would ask for. Then if these things, I, I mean, it would build it into uh, leave the salary where it is on the line item. Just say we're going to take two and a half percent. And then if other things happen, there will be so, some money to work with as we go throughout the year. The staff is getting the step increases. A lot of the staff is, I assume, going to get pretty big or pretty good increases once they've been here longer. So I'm just suggesting maybe back off a little bit. I don't know if we need to take time to calculate what that would be in the budget, but may, maybe it would allow us to, I mean, we weren't, we weren't given, I think we were given three options on how to change the library staffing or the hours. Maybe there's a fourth one that would allow two libraries to open Sunday or to add some hard time staff or something. It would just, it would, it would give some leeway this, in the year. Instead of, you know, cutting every maintenance thing by a couple thousand and so forth. Um, that, that's what I would like to do. I don't know if anybody underst- or comprehend what I'm saying. Just leave it, leave the line items the way we've got them so it balances. This passed a motion saying that we want two and a half percent. And then throughout the year, two, two and a half percent for the cost of living staff. And throughout the year, it would give a little bit more to work with. So the, the budget would still show the same salary numbers. But then the director could either add some part-time or maybe there's some other things that came up, uh, like insurance or something. Uh, I'd like to discuss that.
Trustee Allen?
I'm just not sure how, something that like that would be implemented, meaning the payrolls have to be adjusted, I assume, for an October first raise. Hmm, we're going to raise two and a half percent instead of three, but not have that in the budget. I'm not sure. I just don't understand how how this can be reflected in the budget. Maybe, I don't think we want to sign off on a budget, knowing it's not actually what we want to do. So it goes, I guess I don't really understand how to execute what you're saying.
Interim Director, do you comment on it?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that is a good idea. I don't think it's transparent. I think it's creating a bit of a splash fund. Um, and I think it would be very difficult to actually implement. If you want us to only have two and a half percent, then tell us to only have two and a half percent. We'll redo that line item and you can create a new line item to put that savings in. But the way it was described, I don't think is good business practice.
Mr. Robinson?
Um, I did want to mention um, uh, the, the line item for um, attorney, attorney, what is it? Uh, not professional services, legal services. Uh, when we lowered that, there was a, somebody um, from the community that was concerned that we were lowering it, therefore we're not going to be able to cover that, the fees for that next year, the attorney. And I just wanted to make it clear that the way I look at a budget is you put the number in there for certain ones. I mean, obviously maintenance things come up and, and you have to fix them, but uh, lowering the line item of legal services means we actively take steps to stay within that budget for that line item. So I just want the public to know that when the board does something like that, it's not us thinking, uh, we'll, we'll just make it look good. We're going to lower the number, but we're going to go over, you know, throughout the year on that line item. That we're going to take steps to actually keep within that budget. I mean, that was my intent and I would assume it was everybody else's because we did go back and forth on, I wanted this, this low, somebody wanted here and we kind of met in the middle. So we are going to try to stay within that budgetary number going forward. It's not just a number that we're putting down on paper to make it look like we're, like we're balancing the budget. Uh, so I mean, I hope that's what every, that we're all on the same page with that and that. Yeah, I don't know if you guys remember that, uh, was it email we got or something that someone was concerned about that, but I just, I've been wanting to say that, so.
Okay, so our ready is on, okay, so then we should probably temporarily go to our executive session and then we'll come back to the budget. Your words. We're bringing things down, exactly. Alright, uh, so I move that we go into executive session. So I don't know, so I need more to assist one A, uh, all those and, oh, for a call. Uh, so sir, trustee Campbell?
Hi.
Johnson?
I, box stars.
And I'm an I and an Allen, or uh, hey, is unanimous and we are now in executive session. Which, thank the audience for your understanding. Okay, so the first thing that we're going to need actually is to extend the meeting because we're, we're cut off time.
I move that we extend the meeting.
We, we, we need you back, or?
She, oh, it's on.
No, we need. Oh.
Mine just turned it on, yeah.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I move that we extend the meeting to six-thirty. It has been moved that we extend the meeting to six-thirty. Um, all those in favor, say aye. It is unanimous and the meeting is extended to six-thirty. Alright.
No, then you made.
Do we have someone who wanted to make a motion?
Oh. Um, I'll, I will attempt. I move that we lift the hiring freeze.
It has been moved that we lift the hiring freeze. There's no further debate. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, um, and then he knows, the me, um, so the eyes have it and the hiring freeze is lifted. And so now we are going back to the budget discussion. Mr. Boss?
Go back to what I was saying. If if we need to add another line item, I'd like to have the uh, salary line reduced. But give everybody a two and a half percent increase and add a line item in the budget or for the and under existing line item. Staffing flexibility or something, or library hour flexibility.
Well, you have the interim directors, that would be complicated and uh, she didn't like that idea.
She's going to put it in a line item.
Oh, she? Oh, okay.
So I say, take that out of salary and put it into a good line item.
Interim Director?
I do not believe that is a good course of action. I it's something that could be done, but it's not something that I would recommend and um, I don't know what to think. Um, I think if you want to reduce the salary line item and only have people paid at two point five percent cost of living this year, then you can do that. And then you need to allocate those monies to an existing line item.
Uh, trustee Robinson?
And I'm not sure what the added line item that the trustee is, was saying actually means. Besides, it would be almost like a, a, like a flush fund type of situation. Um, and when there is, when something goes over budget and money is needed to be taken out of somewhere else, it happens anyway. So I don't think we need to start complicating things and making line items of little pockets of money. I mean, honestly, people are having a hard time with even like carve and um, carry forward. So then if all of a sudden we have another line item that has money in it and it's not really being used for something, so I'm, I'm definitely against that.
Yeah, I think that it, it uh, might unnecessarily complicate things. Um, I, I would like to discuss uh, the proposals on page one of the budget discussion memo. Um, I'm fine with all the proposed changes, make it balance. Interim boss?
I'm, I'm fine with them also, but I, I want to cut the salary by half percent, increase by half percent. So that
Hmm.
If you don't want to add another line item, then maybe I just want to make a motion saying that we uh, change it to two and a half percent and leave the salary as it is. I want to get the library director the flexibility to add hours back. Or to change part-time help or something. And if we don't cut someplace, it's going to get spent. So I, I just, I want some flexibility and I, I would reduce the, the uh, salary increase, the salary line item some and make another line item that's just uh, library hour, uh, library hour, uh, flexibility or I don't know what to call it. But if you have to take it, if you have to reduce the salary line item, then, then do it. But we can go put it back into all these things here that we're reducing. And that, that would be okay with me too, but I don't know how much cutting by half percent. The whole it would be, but I, I would, maybe if you would need it to go someplace, put it back into all these different things that we're taking out, two thousand, five thousand.
Uh, interim director?
I believe that um, the board either needs to press pause completely on the open hours study our situation and wait for the new director to arrive and uh, let him do what he needs to do. Or I think you need to implement it as you have agreed to on July twenty-fourth. And the new director's going to have a lot on his plate. And I don't know that making mid-year hour adjustments are something that is standard practice for the library unless there's a budgetary reason to do so. And it would be better to have sort of like a master plan for this to happen in fiscal year twenty-six where he can take several months to figure out the best way to serve the community when there are open hours.
Think that sounds like a better, less complicated plan, trustee Allen?
I was just going to say, I think it's a little late in the budget game to make a significant change like that. The hours have been set up a lot. We're getting to a point, there's probably an expectation by staff that they're getting a three percent raise by now. Expectation is not set in stone. And if we were going to reduce it to two and a half percent, we'd have to say, well, this is actually a quick two in dollars. But then I don't really want to put it back into the few line items that we cut in order to use that as a savings program to pull it back out. And I don't, I don't think that the new director's going to make that many changes. So I, I tend to think that the changes will probably be in fiscal twenty-six by the new director. So I mean, I don't see how, I don't see how to make that workable, workable change.
Okay, um, so as to the question of the page one of the budget discussion memo, we still need to hear from three of our trustees on whether they uh, agree with these suggestions or not on page one.
Yes.
Okay, so Campbell and Robinson, is any of us? Okay, so it is unanimous that we agreed all those as changes on page one. Um, so the budget. Alances, if we have uh, any further, trustee Allen?
Yeah. I have another change, um, and said prepare statement. It's not the whole page, so don't be intimidated by the length of my eight and a half by eleven. Um, the board has recently received a considerable number of original, I say that, they were nice emails. Um, positively, I would say the most I've ever seen on any single subject and that was regarding. Um, possibly, I would say, the most I've ever seen on any single subject, and that was regarding uh, the likely five thousand dollar cut or seventeen percent reduction in funding children's programs for twenty twenty five. And I recall that the concerns the board had when we reached those the children's programs last year, meaning for this current fiscal year. And, uh, that, that fact that we did cut it by an even higher amount. Um, and to my knowledge, the primary goal of these programs is to increase children's literacy and to develop interest in reading. And the board's difficult decisions have been primarily budget, meaning to reduce those programs. And that brings me, I think, to a possible funding solution. Uh, when we worked on the twenty twenty four budget the current year, we discussed the cost of library appropriateness of Freego, a music streaming service that's offered by the CLN. And CLN continues to provide this musical entertainment at a cost of seventeen thousand dollars. I confirmed that amount this week. And the renewal date is in May, I believe it is, it was the end of June. Uh, there are six to seven thousand usages on it per month, so it's fairly popular. But in my opinion, Freego is offered strictly for entertainment value. I spoke and identified any literary merit for this costly service against seventeen thousand dollars. So my question is, do we discontinue this service and reallocate funding to children's programs? At least what we took out this year, restore to the fiscal twenty four amount? Or do we add that money that we potentially would not be paying out to Freego and use it for some other line item that we're struggling with? Well, I have my
Mr. Robinson?
Is, um, is Freego, um, through the CIN?
No.
Oh, it's not?
It used to have.
They, yes, I, I remember when we were gonna like stop getting it, and then I thought CIN kept it, no? So we are still just paying for it?
It was through CIN, it was then canceled, and then we picked it up for our community, and it is, and trustee Hallen, he said seventeen thousand dollars.
And so when you say our community, could only, um, people with a CLN library cards use it?
Trustee Hallen?
Definitely anyone can use it. If somebody wants to give their friends in Florida and California, there are a number on their card, anybody can log in. And, uh, so it's, it's a it's available if people have friends and family and wherever, in other places, but they do have to use, I believe, their CIN, I mean, CLN uh, card in order to access Freego, which line item it it's still, it's, it moved around over the years. Uh, when I did do homework on it and listening to, uh, one, two, three, four, four, five or six different, um, meetings they had, it's moved around from, it had its online, I understand, listening to trustee Robinson in one of the recordings, I think. Then went under collection at some point, when there was subscriptions or balance, or could have. And currently, it's under database, which is probably about half of our budget is from database. I think that's thirty or forty thousand dollars. That I think that's what it's currently coded to.
Well, that's one of the increase.
Okay, continue. And I would say that the emails I got and the whole board got them, that I think there were at least twenty of them, but they it seemed to be a lot of, um, homeschooling people and, um, others that were really concerned about the children's programs, and I, I know we took a bit of a beating last year on it, it's popular. And so I, I guess it's a kind of a discretionary call. Do we value children's programs? And I'm not just picking on one, it could be applied anywhere in the budget. Or do we continue funding what I think is a hundred percent entertainment? I don't know if there's any redeeming literacy value to music streaming service. It's a, it's a hundred percent, it's like buying movie streaming, I suppose. So that's my argument for bringing it in there is I don't, I don't see how it fits into literacy.
Yeah, I, um, since the the statutory reason for the existence of, uh, libraries is education, I, I would like to make sure that homeschool programs don't get cut. I, I would like to add that five thousand back to children's programs. Um, and I'm not it sounded, I, since I've been on the board, it sounds like Freego has been kind of questionable, um, or questioned there every year, anyway. So and I'm not of a, at all. Trustee Box?
I, I remember asking about, um, line item thirty four C O C L C databases. And it went up thirty seven thousand last year to fifty five thousand this year, and I think I was we were told there's just nothing we can do about it, but can you update us on why that went up and is Freego in there?
Interim Director, go.
It went up this year to pay for Freego. Um, it was in collections, and now it's in the database of line.
Trustee Hallen?
And listening to the recordings of meetings since back on the former director, it was being taken out of collections and, but it currently was if this library or staff, we shouldn't compare us with other libraries putting it in collections. We don't really own it, it's a rental. So I think that's why it went into databases. It was easier for us to compare and like staffing percentages within libraries or collections of the libraries, so I put it aligned things a little better. It's, it's a lot of money. And I just think that we're struggling to find money. Well, there's, there's seventeen thousand dollars, and we could restore children's programs or increase it even beyond although where we are now and look at one of the line, and we think it's on, but I just think that this is a it's, I won't say free money, but it's, it's money that I don't think is necessarily well spent there.
Mr. Robinson?
Um, so did the trustees say that it's, it's re-upped in May? So if we took it off the twenty five year budget, twenty twenty five year budget, uh, would it still be on?
No.
Until next May? That would give people a, a cool down period. I'm not against, um, doing that because it has been a we've talked about it since we've been on the board, you know, keeping it, getting rid, getting rid of it. I think we kept it that one year because usage went up. I think that's why we did it. But, um, if you're gonna go along with the statement of the library and what it's, you know, all about, uh, and I, I do I do know that programs are important to the community and to the staff uh, or their vision of libraries and what they're supposed to be. So I wouldn't, um, I wouldn't I would be for that, actually, and I, uh, think it's pretty cool that you found it.
So I think that that's operational, um, is staff open to that idea?
It is very lame, and if there is the feeling that we, like, I, part of me is thinking that's seventeen thousand dollars, maybe we just don't even make all the changes on page one that you guys just agreed to, except for one of those thousand dollars. And that covers our insurance right there if we don't get Freego. Like, that's where my brain is at. So I'm I appreciate that you're asking this, and I have, I received it, and we can figure out where you want and we want to cut the money.
Okay, um, yeah, I think that we would want to put five thousand back into the children's programs.
Right, right.
So we would need to make probably more than just one of those suggestions. Mr. Box?
And I would, um, even consider putting some of it back into the collections that we cut, you know, five thousand or something back into collections. Yeah, we need to fund the insurance and figure out which are the riskiest things that we had on this on the R and Ms.
Trustee Hallen?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're trying to play with this money, aren't we, allocating it? The Great American Cost, as it says here on that memo, is nine thousand dollars. Is that still current or not? I mean, always had a, should we just going by historical, we paid this current year?
Um, we paid, I think it was a little less than eight thousand last year, and I don't have the renewal price for this year since the cross nation.
Okay, um, so it is, uh, eight minutes until our next time to end. Uh, are we, if we can get this tackled out, are we ready to pass the budget?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so let's have all right, uh, so interim director, which ones do you feel are most that we can hear of?
So I I just want to make sure that we have five thousand going to youth services, correct? And five thousand going to collections, is that correct, from trustee Hallen?
Yeah, trustee Cross, I believe. But I'm also wondering, do we cut janitorial too close?
I was gonna say, we should add money back to janitorial.
The seven, the rest of the seven?
Okay, I am good with that.
Is, is Freego exactly seventeen thousand?
Yes.
If I was gonna, so databases went up even more than just Freego. Because that would be fifty four thousand instead of fifty five.
And I think Freego's been seventeen for years. I remember right. That number just is in my head.
Yeah, I think so. Uh, so collections, is that line? Yeah, five thirty. Okay.
Which we, I need to, what's collections gonna be?
So five K to line thirty, five K to line twenty nine. And then the other seventeen to line?
Seven.
Or not seventeen, twelve? Right.
Seven.
Seven.
And out.
Seven in there, sweet. Okay, so the other seven to line forty three, janitorial?
So that put it back to one seventy five. Janitorial. Yes. What's that?
Okay.
Special special maybe.
Uh, well, first week, we have to accept the budget as amended, so there is no objection, uh, that
You mean, we approve the budget as amended, uh, in the session?
It has been moved to approve the budget as amended in the session. All of us, if there's no further, uh, discussion? Trustee Box?
Can, can we go through and actually list those items? What, what the new budget or the new version is? Line thirty is three hundred and five instead of thirty, three hundred?
The entrance is thirty thousand instead of twenty five?
The order is thirty thousand instead of twenty five, so that's line twenty nine. And you know, database thirty four is, uh, fifty five minus seventeen. There's thirty eight thousand six fifty, so is that right? And then janitorial. Forty five. Forty three stays hundred and seventy five. But we have to change the other ones based on the sheet here.
No, I think they already changed.
What I can
Oh, are they?
Yeah, they are. What I can do is we can approve it, and I can edit it and send it to you all for final review. And then you'll can come and sign the, the alt two, and it's all ready.
Okay. Great. There is no further discussion. It has been moved to approve the budget as amended in, uh, the session, is that the session word that you used? Okay. Uh, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so it is unanimous, there wouldn't be any no's, and the budget is approved as amended in this session. Okay, so all right, so the next item then is set special on regular meeting dates. I'm guessing since we just approved the budget, we don't need to do that. Yeah, our next meeting is September nineteenth, that post falls. Uh, yes, interim director?
I put, um, all of the meetings at post falls. Like, I put the September one there because that will be the new director's first week, and I thought it might be too much for him to go to Pinehurst his first week. I also put, um, a November meeting at Apple if we are open and we could see all the work that was done. So that is tentative, but I, I just filled out meeting reservations as they're listed.
Okay, sounds fantastic.
No, no Pinehurst schedule.
No.
Okay.
All right, uh, so not hearing anything about setting special on regular meeting dates, other than, uh, but interim director has just explained to us, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Time that we adjourn.
Okay, has been moved that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it is unanimous, and you are now adjourned.